Call the order this special meeting April 30th, 2018 of the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Please join us in the flag salute.
I would like to lead the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the city of San Antonio.
Thanks and welcome, everyone. Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda. I think it's important when we have an action item that we hear from the public as possible. And I would like to either insert a public input section or make sure that during discussion of item three, we're allowed to take input on that item.
Take input? Okay. We can do that. Okay. Role calls. Oh, no, sorry. That's later. We got a second. So, all in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Agenda approved. Approve or disapprove? Letter of support for the village of Santa Clara, desire to purchase land from the Healan National Forest Management. Do you make interruptions? Or you're on your own here?
Mayor Nosh, you want to come up and present your request for the letter of support and explain a little bit about what you're doing, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. The village would like to purchase a piece of, portion of the military reserve that's close to the village for economic development. We have an individual that is interested in developing some resources there. We made a request to the federal government to be able to purchase that land because it's military reserve. And they mentioned during the process that this is about the eighth or ninth time that has been done in recent years. And we go back and get small sections and small sections. And what they requested us to do is to have the entire military reserve or the remainder of all the property conveyed at one time so it, they don't have to go back and do it again. And that way, by doing it that way, it would allow the local forest service to actually make the sale of the property as opposed to us going to the Congress and getting the president a signature for every time we need to get, you know, a small piece of it. And it'll actually, basically, the transfer or the conversion will, conversion, I guess, will actually not really change a great deal other than the fact that who we're purchasing it from. Instead of going to Congress, we'd go to a local forest service and work out there. The other stipulation that part of the original legislation that goes with it is the fact that we have to purchase it in 40 acre or larger increments. And this would allow us to purchase a smaller amount, maybe five or 10 acres as need to instead of a whole 40 acres or more. So those two things are a big advantage. And while we're in the process of developing the legislation that went through this, they had mentioned the fact that they would like, because this is in the county, and they would like to see if the county would support this kind of legislation and that we could get a letter of support from the county. So the county's aware of what's going on and also, you know, conscious of what we're doing and going from there. Have any questions?
Any questions?
Several, it sounds like. I'm somewhat confused by the current administrative structure, I guess, of this land. You say it's a military reserve, and yet this is authorizing the forest system to sell it?
Well, when they created the fort years ago in the 1800s, they created this military reserve that goes around the fort with the intent or the purpose for the village of Santa Clara or central city at the time to expand and grow along with the fort. It was a concept. And the way the legislation was done, it's not Healan National Forest or forest land exactly, but it's managed by the forest service. And so they don't really have, because it's military reserve, they don't really have, like, authority out there, but they have the responsibility of managing the property. So they sort of oversee it until the village needs it.
We're trying to get them to convey the land to the forest service, but on these documents it says convey the land to the village of Santa Clara?
That's what the, that's what the, the Congress wrote, to transfer the property, I mean, convey the property to the village. And because it's being managed by the forest service, we actually will make the purchase through the forest service because they're in charge of it. You know, they oversee it. Am I explaining that right?
The provisions involve payment. Convey just means change title.
And I'm also looking at your map, Mayor. It's not showing where we own the shooting range?
I'm sorry?
It's dark in there, so what would? We lease it from the, my confusion.
Okay. That's the county's property.
So then that portion where the, we actually lease that for long-term lease?
The state owns, are you talking about the shooting range?
Yes.
We lease from, like, to go back, the mayor is absolutely correct. Even if you look at a forest service map, that stuff that's crosshatched is slightly different color. And it is land owned by the federal government and is managed by the forest service. So this is the first I've seen of this conveyance, so I'm still trying to get my head around how that's going to end up in Santa Clara's hand. But that crosshatched stuff, there's even, it goes further out there. Well, maybe that's about it. But it's about, it's a little over two sections, so that's about right, 1,500 acres. And then the part that is white, that's obviously state land. And then where the number 35 is, that is county-owned land.
Now, would this conveyance affect our lease?
If they got that portion, we would have to make a lease with them or move the shooting ranch. Actually, Seaman wants to, you want to address this subject?
It would not affect your lease unless the village of Santa Clara bought that property off from the forest service. Otherwise, the lease would stay the same.
And it very well may make it easier for us to purchase it if we chose to.
Correct.
Well, that's not, this bill says to me, you'd have to have a different bill. This bill only says sell to the village of Santa Clara. And I'm still confused on why it even says that in this bill because I thought we were conveying to the forest service so the forest service could sell it.
I thought we were conveying to the forest service.
So, yeah, which in that case to me would make it easier for us to purchase portions, maybe even square up, maybe part of ours. Do you think that this was a misunderstanding with Representative Pierce's office or are we just misunderstanding what's needed?
No, from what I've gotten out of it is they're conveying it, setting it aside for Santa Clara to purchase in small lots through the forest service. So they have to convey it to the forest service for Santa Clara, basically.
What if it said Santa Clara and Grant County?
I believe because back when, it was already set aside from Santa Clara. So that's why they had that situation with the hospital where Santa Clara had to buy it and then the county paid for the transfer land.
So the land that the new hospital sets on, Santa Clara bought it and then purchased it from you?
Yes.
Well, that's just as easy?
We bought it.
Another way to skin a cat. Gotcha. So I have a concern, not a question. My concern is that there's no room in here for administrative discretion, right? That Congress is saying, as long as you all pay for the survey for the appraisal and the market value of the property, the forest service is required to sell presumably whatever parcel you identify that you wish to purchase. Why couldn't this not say the secretary is authorized to make such a sale, thereby avoiding having to go back to Congress for authorization, but preserving the secretary's discretion as head of a large agency to determine what's in the best interest of what is federal property right now?
Like I said, when we originally made the request, we requested, I believe it was around 51 acres because it's an unusual size and we use existing boundaries. They, when we sent the request off, we had it surveyed and they came back, the forest, the procedure was it goes from there to the forest service to review it before it actually goes to Congress and those people. The forest service added several acres, about 30 acres more because there's little slivers of land alongside of Highway 180 and various things that, that they wanted to dispose of as well, very small little pieces of property to make it more simple. So they increased it to like almost 80 acres. And when it went to Congress, they were saying, you know, this terminology and everything came from the way Congress came back to the forest service saying, this is the way we want to do it. And the forest service reviewed that and they said, yes, this is good, this worked for them. So we had nothing to do with actually the way it was written or, you know, how it was explained in the thing. So this is, and their concept is, like I say before, they, they want to make it to where you don't have to go back and deal with it anymore. They originally wanted us to actually purchase the whole 1,540 acres. But I had mentioned to them that, you know, we're not in a position to do that. We don't have the revenue for that. And, you know, whatever the value would be, unless it would be very, very modest, you know, it could be very large sum of money. So that's where they, they addressed it to the forest service to where we could get it as needed, you know? There's a size that we needed instead of buying the whole thing.
All right. Just register my concern. I'm done, otherwise.
The way I read this, it says the 1,520 acres. I can't see what it says part of.
Oh, it's a later.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Identify, it's in number three, starts on line seven of the page, of the second page, which is labeled page three, oh, that's the third page, third page, where it says, you know, parcel land identified by the village of Santa Clara. So they identify parcel, they get it appraised, they pay for that amount. And then without any intervention by any agency, the property is conveyed to them.
Okay. Any other questions?
So I just have a clarification. So if I understand this correctly, then because the military reservation was originally set aside for the village of Santa Clara, conveying what's left of it to the village of Santa Clara keeps that intent intact. And then the village has to have the means to purchase it, the agent in effect is the forest service. And there are requirements that the village has to do, like the environmental and market value and all that sort of stuff in order to purchase it.
Other questions?
I hope we can hear from other members of the interesting.
Okay. And we agreed to that, so.
Before we're doing too much discussion, discussion actually.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I approve the letter of support for the village of Santa Clara.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, we'll have discussion. Any discussion here?
I would still like to hear.
Okay. We'd like to hear public input. I think Mr. Owens has something he'd like to say, if that's okay.
The reason I'm here is I just wanted to also bring to the commissioners' attention that there was a large group of us here several years ago, 10, 15, whatever it was, when the original Baton Memorial Park was proposed, the place that it was proposed for was in your front map there, section 34 on the left-hand side, I've kind of put a divided line there. That was where the Baton Memorial Park was going to be, the recreational area. And for a variety of reasons, including traffic, lighting, people use the area currently as a recreation area, and kind of, there was a lot of reasons, but there was a lot of opposition to that being located just in that position. So there was a petition drive and there were between 500 to 700 signatures collected to have that moved from that proposed site over to its current site because we knew that the village of Santa Clara had access to that land and could, you know, could put it in a good place. And at that time, I know we came to that current commission, which I don't know if anybody were on that or not, but it was kind of like the F-16 thing where we filled this room three people deep around the sides. And there was a lot of strong opposition to that particular piece of land being developed as, even as a recreational site. So we didn't just say no, we said no, and here's a better site. And that's where it currently is, exists. I've been chatting with the mayor and kind of discussing those concerns with some of the citizens there. It's interesting, there's the potential that I could be a commissioner and now I recognize a little bit about, within my district, there's two groups of people that could kind of be in opposition a little bit for what's going to happen with land in this case. I have a little bit of concern about, some of you all expressed about the language in here, what it says. It seemed like the language should be that we support and, and by the way, I do support the village being able to expand and to get their land easier instead of doing a little 40. I mean, one change that could be made to this letter would be to change the five to a two, and then I could be 100% behind the letter. If that western half of. Yeah. So that western part, which is the area that you can see looking on there, there's like a natural creek area that goes all the way through there. And it's this natural, if you know the area, it's this natural valley, it's a really beautiful valley. People use it to recreate it all the time. And if somehow, and that's the farthest area away from Santa Clara as well. So if, you know, they could still have 1,200 and something acres to develop and head in their direction, if that area could somehow be certain, kind of set aside so that it can be debated or it can be discussed about the best use for that land. Because I know there's a large group of people that are concerned about trying to keep that in a natural state. And the mayor suggested maybe like a memorandum of understanding or something like that could be done where it says we're going to have it as an open space perhaps, or, I mean, he was suggesting that there, it's possible that something like that could happen. My concern is that we can say that, yeah, that's a good idea in the future, but if we say now, we want to give them access to all this land, then five, 10, whatever number of years into the future from now, a different council could come and say, oh, look at that land, it's right next to a road, there's water, there's electricity, easiest to develop, we'll plop in who knows what into that area. So that's kind of the concern that I bring to you is that there are a number of people that would rather see that land used in a different way. The mayor says they have no plans at this point, I understand, to do anything with that, it's the farthest away. My concern again is about the future. So if there was a way to amend the letter to change that and if he was amenable to it, you know, that would be an easy kind of a compromise thing. And again, he's working with, I guess, the Pierce's office out of, and that they're doing that. I'm not sure of the position that the senators, it has to take Congress to actually agree with this. And I'm not sure how the senators would feel about having the kind of hornet's nest of people that maybe don't go along with that. So that's, unless you have any questions? Yeah, the western half of section 34 is what I'm talking about. Yeah, I just drew a line in there. Oh, and then the other map just shows you, the mayor was asking about, well, what about like kind of a legal description of that area you're talking about? And so I had that map just made up and that kind of divides that section into its section. So the northwest and the southwest quarter of that section is what we're talking about. So it might be easy to, in legal terms, to describe what it is that we were concerned about. Just two other things to mention. In that, the second map, you can see that the Arenas Valley Road actually lies inside of that section. And I've been told that in the past, that Fort Barrett actually goes across that county road into some property that's over there just a little bit. And then back to the original map, kind of the white one that you guys have, in the left-hand corner, and I went and talked to the forest service people about this and asked them, what is this PLO 2830? And there's been some kind of special restriction put on that corner so that it wouldn't get developed in some manner, but nobody over there could tell me what that meant. And there's another one to the right-hand side here which says PLO 1290. And apparently that's some designation that they have overlaid onto the land that has some kind of special restrictions on it. And I don't know what those are. Yeah, it's on that white map. So I don't actually know what those are, but it would seem like it would be a good idea to kind of clear all that out and have a real clear understanding of exactly how it's being conveyed and what those mean.
Mayor, what's the timing of this?
I'm sorry, I'm in here.
The time schedule, why did this come to this now and said wait until the maybe, there must be so, time must be of essence here?
Yes, they're asking, like I said, they were wanting to introduce it into the Congress sometime soon, within the next two, three weeks. And I don't know why, what's driving it on their side, but there's something on their scheduling and whatnot that they're all trying to do within the next two or three weeks over there. So they're asked if we could get this done and get it to them the first part of this month so they would be able to do it. And if I could respond a little bit, I realize what Mr. Owens is saying and of course, the purpose is to transfer the whole thing. If we do less than, if we do less than the entire acreage, then we're back to where we were originally, there's still a piece left and the Congress would have to address it later. So the conveyance should probably include it all. The village has no, you know, as, as the village develops the property, should it have the opportunity, it'd have to do it in continual things. We couldn't do it in an island. You know, we'd have to have continual development. So it's going to be many years before we get out that far. But there would be possible the village, you know, could designate that as a natural park or something like that and have that property set aside even though it was conveyed to the town, you know, to the village. We could, we could also, you know, give that designation to it so we respect that and those sites that were out there. Those sensitive sites are also, while we have an environmental study before we purchase it, because we know there's some other areas in that whole area that are sensitive that we've already identified.
Any more questions for the mayor? Yes, go ahead.
So this may be a question actually for Abby. I'm not entirely sure, but so if, if the village of Santa Clara took some kind of action declaring this western half of section 34 a park or something like that, is there, so I guess my question is, is there a way to have a binding agreement from the village of Santa Clara, something other than an MOA, some way to have a binding agreement that, to protect that western half of that section? Because what could happen, regardless of what the village's plans are, if a developer came along with a lot of money and offered it to the village, I can't see them not taking it at some level. So is there a way to protect that western half of that section now prior to this happening? Or some kind of agreement whereby they would have to make good on that if this went through?
To follow up with that, just if you don't mind, somebody mentioned that it could go to Grant County and Santa Clara and then, but it couldn't because the original intent was to set it apart for Santa Clara. But could Grant County? I too agree that there might be some sort of oversight as to what happens to this land. So, so yeah, same question, but with that extra file.
I think the question is to address that in here. In the letter or in the? In the bill. In the bill, saying this land is going to go to Santa Clara and Santa Clara will own this. And I don't see how we would be able to tell them what they should do with it. However, we could always enter an agreement for consideration with Santa Clara. We'll give you something if you agree to do this. However, if they want to breach that, they could and they still own the land. Does that make sense? Your recourse would not be that you would somehow take that land away or stop, stop that transfer. Your recourse would be to enforce an agreement that they've breached. I would say you probably don't have a lot of control over that piece that you're concerned about if this goes through, if this is approved.
I personally don't think we should be telling Santa Clara what to do with property that's not even theirs yet. But what is the proper protocol to utilize that property and would you use, would you happen to, would you have to have public hearings at that point? Which I'm almost positive you would. But what would be protocol to take over that property and do something with it?
I would imagine, just like anything else, we want to develop, you know, especially if we go out that far, we go through the process of public meetings and discussion on, you know, what is going to be used for developers and those kinds of things. And like I say, none of the status of the property is going to change now because it's still going to be managed by the forest service. So, you know, until we actually move out there or do something, then we'll have a different, you know, approach on it. But the only thing that I would see that as far as doing it after the conveyance, what happened, would be if we were to go ahead and annex it and then during the annexation, we would designate that as a city park. You know, that would be one way to do it, you know, but before we do any development out there, you know, we go through the normal public meetings and whatever, we'd have to go through zoning and that kind of thing.
So essentially, if we were to approve this today, I'm sort of thinking out loud here, so anybody help me out here. But if we were to approve this today, then it would essentially be up to the folks that Mr. Owens was talking about to protest any sort of development should it come up. So should there be a buyer approach the town for this area, then it would essentially be up to the folks in that area to protest it the same as they did before, right?
Yes.
If there was no, if there was no other designation. But then whoever the buyer was would have to, environment and all that.
They were protesting to the county.
Yeah.
This is an important distinction. Now they would be protesting to the village of Santa Clara or they are not voters.
Well, and, but, why, I don't, yes, I understand why they could have protested then to the county before.
Because the plan was apparently a package deal where they were going to go to Santa Clara first and the Santa Clara was going to sell to the county. That was a part of, all part of the plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? That is not part of the current plan.
Yeah.
If it were, I'd have a different outlook on it.
Yeah.
But you're basically allowing one group of county residents to decide what happens to the county. to the quality of life of another group of county residents, and the county doesn't have a voice.
Right.
And to me, that doesn't feel right.
I certainly don't know the history of this particular issue, but you, it seems to be that everyone agrees that the land was intended for Santa Clara, and that's where it has to go, correct? If it's going to...
I haven't been told. I haven't done that research.
I'm just wondering if you approve this, if you're in any different position than you are now? If, if it, does that make sense? Because it's, it's...
The whole point of the letter is supported, is to indicate our position on an issue, not to claim we have authority over the issue. So, if we don't support it, we don't need to send a letter.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Is there any further discussion for the...
Yeah, I have another question, actually, and I don't know if anybody here can answer it. We receive close to a million dollars plus a year in payments in lieu of taxes from the federal government, and I have no idea how that's affected by one thousand five hundred and twenty acres of federal land, but presumably, we would lose the pilt associated with that land. Am I missing something?
I have to assume that's right, of whatever they purchased. I don't see, I don't see them buying all that anytime soon.
A lot of this is clearly well down the road, in the future, but it's wise of us to look ahead, since I often critique decisions made without, and consider the future. So, we don't know how much that would affect our budget, but we would be supporting something that in the end could affect our budget somewhat.
Well, how much?
Less than a dollar an acre.
And is it just acreage, or do they value different acres differently? Because this is prime acreage compared to, well, other places that to me are nicer, but that have a lower market value.
My guess is that would be offset by any, especially along the state highway, that the taxes that would be paid on that would more than offset the cost.
Depending on the, the cost of the building space, you're not getting any new taxes off of that, but that's true.
Of course, that's not saying that Santa Clara in the future isn't going to do something very positive and create better taxes for us. So, I mean, we're all looking into the future, but we really don't know what's going to happen, so we, we just kind of try and do what's best for Santa Clara at this point.
Well, and what's best for Ariness Valley, I think, is what we have to consider as well.
If there's no further discussion, then, Owen, take it.
I.
The vote?
Mayor.
The motion carries.
Agenda item number five, executive session in accordance with NMSA statutes nineteen seventy-eight, specifically for the disposal of real property.
Chairman?
Yes.
I move to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten fifteen one H, for the discussion of real property and any action necessary as a result of the closed executive session.
Is it second?
Second.
Commissioner Brown, are you aware you're entering into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brown, are you aware you're entering into executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair, I wonder, are you aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman Billings, are you aware you're entering into executive session? Commissioner Caston, are you aware you're entering into...
Huh? Yes.
Executive session.
We are now in executive session, and...
If we can tell Mary Alice, we don't plan to do any decisions. No decisions. We're not going to do anything. Go away.
No decision will be made, as in...